They did not a whole episode, but they did a large part of one of the episodes about SLECK.
Yeah, oh wow.
They talked a lot about campus, of course.
Yeah.
And this was at the beginning of last season, so you kind of already know what happened, but it's still pretty cool.
Yeah, okay.
All that behind the scenes stuff, right now they're with Connor McGregor.
Okay.
Not Connor McGregor, you know what I'm talking about, the Oilers.
Yeah, yeah. It would be, because I, you know, because I like some of the NFL, I call it Howard and I was really, it wasn't safe. It wasn't just quite.
So we are gathered here to make a special town meeting for central board issued by this select board out of 10th day of October 2024. Does the town warrant the support?
Yes.
No?
Oh, we have.
Okay, good. Are your non-voters in the hall? Let's please move to the front row here.
They're all there.
Oh, you're all there, okay. Any other non-voters? You pick me up, you're on the right side. Okay. I'm not going to read all the names, this is an abbreviated introduction notice, any introduction to having members, uh, having people who vote, who work for the town, but are not voting over the town meeting, address the town with any information that we need.
No objection.
No objections. Now, this year, the finance committee has included a page in their finance committee report, which is a work from the mayor, which includes all the rules of the debate, which I normally state, and very nicely spells out exactly what the applications are, so I might already dispense with saying it again, but does anyone have any questions about the rules of the debate? No? Okay, so we'll start with Article One. Which is to hear the... I'm sorry. Will Clark, please read your turn of service.
Pursuant to the note warned to be directed, I know that I warned all the habits of town to assume ready for qualified to vote to meet at said time in place, Council of Bradbury, date of 10/11/2024.
Article One is to hear and act upon the reports of town officers and committees, and you do have some reports. Mr. Strong?
Hello, everybody, I'm the chair of the planning board. The planning board continues to work on the day-to-day tasks of helping the residents of West Newbury. We and the town are fortunate to have new town planner this fall, her name is Katrina O'Leary, I don't think she's here tonight, or I'd embarrass her if I had her stand. She's got great experience, she's already proven herself to be key, so we're really lucky to have her. We're also being very proactive with respect to the ADU bylaw. Thanks to the West Newbury citizens, we have an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, bylaw in place before the state passed its law, requiring ADUs to be allowed by right to like Massachusetts. Our bylaw and the Massachusetts law are nearly the same, though we will have to adjust ours at the spring town meeting. We're extremely lucky to have Sam Jostlin as our building commissioner, is Sam here? No? And he's been working hard to resolve ambiguities in the state law, so that we know what we have to do with our bylaw this spring. I don't know if you've heard about battery storage, our electrical grid is made more robust through the inclusion of battery storage facilities, which can store energy when there is excess production, and provide energy when there is excessive demand. These are called large-scale ESS. These facilities are already in use broadly, there are several in Massachusetts already, and it's possible someone could want to have a facility someday in West Newbury, so as such, we want to have a bylaw in place that will address citizen concerns and protect our brothers in the town. Again, we are fortunate to have Sam Jostlin as our commissioner, and he's been working with other inspectors in the communities and the region to draft a good bylaw. We've reviewed the preliminary draft, provided feedback, and that work is ongoing, we may have a proposed bylaw for the community this spring. With respect to the MBTA Communities Act, they've been working hard to figure out the best way for West Newbury to comply with the MBTA Communities Act, which was passed by the state in 2021. It requires our town to have an area, or areas, zoned for multiple multifamily housing. To be clear, it does not require the town or developer to build the housing in that zone, and it does not require housing in that future zone to be built out to maximum density. Indeed, the fact that we don't have town sewerage would make it extremely difficult to achieve the density that the MBTA Communities Act requires. We are an adjacent small town, which means that we are required to zone enough acreage at 15 minutes per acre to provide at least the possibility of 87 new units in multifamily housing. Again, even if we comply with the act, because there's no sewerage in the town, we only expect about a third to a half of the required units could be built if anybody tries. About a year ago, with the help of our consultants with Dodson and Flinker, we had public forums to get input of what that zone might look like, and last spring we presented information to the town. After considerable work and a detailed analysis of the entire town, it was found that two properties in the town could potentially work, 187 Main Street and 317 Main Street. Early this year, we decided not to have a vote at this year's spring town meeting, as the town of Milton's lawsuit is pending, and because the citizens wanted more information, including a more detailed look at the town-owned Mullen property, and we reconsidered areas that have already been developed. The town manager, Angus Jennings, and representatives from different groups and committees in the town along with the planning board have been working diligently on this, and we hope to bring a proposed zoning bylaw to the town at the spring town meeting, but your input is important. We need your feedback, and the sooner we get it, the sooner we can consider your points of view and your suggestions. Detailed explanations are available in the planning board area of the town website, we will be having a couple of public meetings on this issue, please come to those, and in the meantime, Planner O'Leary invites you direct feedback to her in person or via email. Thank you.
Article... Okay, I have that you wish to speak before Article Seven, and this is Article One, do you wish to change it to Article One?
I was given to understand that I was able to give the report on behalf of the tree committee, if that's not true, I can wait, that's what I'm trying to do.
No, 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 I gave, I got the information through the grapevine, that you wished to give a report before Article Seven, which is fine, I have it down, but if you wished to give it under Article One, that's not so fine. So, but not now.
Sorry for the confusion, I'm fresh and I'm the chair of the tree committee. I thought I'd give you a quick update generally on the status of the ash tree problem that we have in town. As you know, our ash trees are dying from the Emerald Ash Board, and the town has been kind enough to vote funds, first to inject the trees that might survive, and second to help with the removals in the phased program, one of which is, as you heard, Article Seven, which will come up later. I'll just give you a very quick status report. Of the 177 trees that were initially injected, we saved about a third of them, which is much more than the experts thought we might, so we have, at least by best count, 59 ash trees that have survived. These are ones that are on the public roadways, not on private property, or not on other town properties. At this point, we have 252 removals to go. So you've already voted some funds, and we've removed a total of 153 trees, in a way that gave priority to some of the high-traffic areas, some of the higher-risk areas, so we're going to continue this phased approach tonight with Article Seven, and then in the spring, we'll see where we stand, and ask for more funds to complete, as best we can, the removal process at that point. Just so you know, West Newbury is among the highest in our whole area in terms of tree canopy cover. 60% of our town is covered with trees. That is worth about three-quarters of a million dollars per year in various ways, CO2 removal, stormwater mitigation, air pollution removal, and so on. So just by standing there, by keeping trees alive, we're saving, over time, three-quarters of a million dollars a year. So the tree committee appreciates your interest in trees, and the fact that you are willing to help maintain our canopy, and to address the Emerald Ash Board problem. Thank you very much.
So our major board, Mr. Strong, our town...
Thank you, Madam Moderator, I have just a couple of brief project updates I wanted to provide while we had people here. The first is regarding Middle Street Bridge, I've heard updates on this over the last couple of years. I'm very delighted to report that we went through the public bidding process this fall after having secured all the project funding over the summer, in part with a DMS agreement with the city U Record, as well as significant prior contributions approved by this body. So the bids were open on October 1st, four bids were received, all from vendors who were pre-qualified by the Department of Transportation for bridge construction, three of the four bids were within project budget, and we have awarded the construction contract to the low-wear for about $3 million, so that's, you know, that cost could change as we, it will change orders and so forth, but the estimated project cost was $3.6 million, and the overall project budget that we've been working with carried a significant construction contingency above $3.6. So if we award the contract at $3 million, it's a huge win, and we're working on engaging a resident engineer right now, and we'll be issued notice to proceed to begin construction in the coming months, so that's a huge step forward in the Middle Street Bridge project. Thank you. Second update, you hopefully saw the handout on the way in regarding the Route 113 Main Street corridor plan initiative, we are having a major public meeting on Thursday, November 14th, that's going to take place here in this building, engaging everybody out front, so that's going to be very, very good meeting, if there's some people interested in corridor planning, pedestrian safety, cycling, multimodal transportation planning, there's been a lot of work going on on that, and so we'd like to see everybody there. Third idea, that's another kind of top-tier project the town is pursuing, is the Page School Conditions Assessment. We did receive a draft report earlier this year, we provided a number of comments back to the architect and their engineering consultants, and they're doing some additional work to get the report fully responsive to the community's questions. It's coming on very nicely, they've done a lot of work, and we are gearing up toward what we expect will be a major public meeting right around probably late January or early February. Once we have a date set for that, our plan is actually to do a town-wide annaler, to make sure every single household in the town is aware of that meeting before it takes place, because it is absolutely one of the most important issues facing the town at this point, so it's going to be a Page School Conditions Assessment. And finally, I would just remind people that you can get updates on these and other major projects on the town website, there's a link right on the front page, says Town Projects, and there's about a dozen pages for some of the higher-profile projects and initiatives, that we try to keep those updated, and so that's a good way to stay current. Also, people can subscribe on the website, receive town agendas for boards, commissions, and committees, including the select board, and also we post to the town website all the select board meeting packets, no later than the date of the meeting, so if you see something of interest on the select board agenda, you can go right to the website, pull up the meeting packet, and have everything in front of you that the board has in front of them, so it's a great way to, you know, follow along with what the board's doing, and follow these kinds of meetings, and get involved with these really interesting conversations that go on every, every single day at town office. Thank you.
It is our president's meeting this article open for the direction, maybe because there are some other reports that people wish to give prior to this article, and so we'll move on to Article Two, but Article One is still open. Article Two... Article Two involves reduction in current year tax rate.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to some of $220,000 to reduce the current year tax rate.
Second.
Most discrimination on finance.
Madam Moderator, the finance committee asks that the voters approve the motion to use $220,000 of free cash to lower the current year tax rate.
Is there any discussion? Seeing that all this has been the blue treasure green card, all this opposed blue treasure red card, it's unanimous. Article Four involves technical assistance to update the town's open space and recreation plan.
I agree with you guys. I move that the town votes transfer from the Community Preservation Act Open Space and Recreation Reserve Fund the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of funding technical assistance to update the town's open space and recreation plan, including all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to close out the Community Preservation Act Open Space and Recreation Reserve Fund at the close of the fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Those recreation plans.
Madam Moderator, the finance committee asks that the voters approve the motion to use $25,000 from CPA funds for technical assistance to update our open space and recreation plan.
Is there any discussion? If not, all this has been the blue treasure green cards, all this opposed blue treasure red cards, it's unanimous. Article Four involves purchase and installation of marker, trail markers within the Mill Pond Recreation Area.
All right, I move that the town transfer, vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Act Open Space and Recreation Reserve Fund the sum of $3,900 for the purpose of funding the purchase and installation of trail markers within the Mill Pond Recreation Area, including all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the Community Preservation Act Open Space and Recreation Reserve Fund at the close of the fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Those recreation plans.
The finance committee asks that the voters approve the motion to use $4,500 from CPA funds for trail markers at Mill Pond Recreation Area. Oh, I'm sorry, where did I have? It's sorry. We rather have approval, whether or not the committee will vote on that.
Is there any discussion? If not, all this has been the blue treasure green cards, all this opposed blue treasure red cards, it's unanimous. Article Five actually contains three different sections, and they're all included in the same motion, so it's a rather complicated one, you need to pay attention. It involves funding the construction of the footpaths to the Page School Pipe Save Route 113 intersection and crosswalk, but in order to do that, it involves the transfer of a portion of town property located on Main Street for the construction, and it also involves obviously the select board to grant permanent and temporary easements in and on said portions to the Commonwealth. What is the recommendation, I'm sorry? With the motion.
I move the town vote to A, transfer from the town stabilization fund the sum of $366,000 to fund the construction of supposed improvements to the Page School Pipe Save Route 113 intersection and crosswalk, including all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the town stabilization fund at the close of fiscal year 2026. And B, transfer of care, custody, and control portions of the town-owned property located at 694 Main Street, town parcel ID 023R000000230, D book 5874, page 216, land book 44, page 27, on which the John, Dr. John C. Page School is situated, and which abuts Main Street Route 113. From the school committee to other board or offices having custody thereof, the school purposes and the select board for public way purposes and for the purpose of conveyance, which portions are approximately shown on a plan entitled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Plan, Main Street Route 113, in the town of West Newbury, Essex County, dated 8/29/2024, prepared by TDC Inc., which are 12 sheets, as said plan may be amended by the select board and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and/or replaced with an easement plan. And C, authorize the select board to grant permanent and temporary easements in, on, and under said portions to the Commonwealth on such terms as the select board deems appropriate, and/or to dedicate said portions to the public way purposes, which portions of the town property should be located within the state highway layout of Route 113 Main Street.
Second. What is your recommendation, Mr. Strong?
Madam Moderator, the finance committee asks that the voters approve the motion to use $366,000 from our stabilization fund to construct improvements, including sidewalks and a crosswalk between Pipe Save and Page School, as well as a directly-related transfer of control of about 450 square feet of land, and granting of easement as required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Is there any discussion? Because this involves taking money from the stabilization fund, the partial, so if you recall, town meeting agreed to authorize the moderator to call a two-third vote, you always have the right to gather if you do, so I'm going to start in reverse order, and ask all those opposed to this motion, please raise your red cards. All those who favor, please raise your green cards. Why don't you pass it to unanimous? Article Six involves a 10% action requirement to be paid and awarded with municipal vulnerability preparedness action grant, and at fiscal year 25, grant grant round for River Road Resiliency Plan. Ms. Callahan?
Good evening, Mylan, can you hear me? I'm Liz Callahan, I'm the chairperson for the Climate Change Resiliency Committee, and I'd like to start first by giving our, our committee report. The Climate Change Resiliency Committee supports West Newbury's efforts to prepare for anticipated climate change threats to our infrastructure, safety, and environmental quality. Our work includes public education and assistance in seeking grant funding to act on priorities the town identified in its 2020 Municipal Vulnerability, Vulnerability Plan. The 2020 Municipal Vulnerability Plan identified the risks posed to River Road as a top priority. This past fiscal year, the Climate Change Resiliency Committee supported the town and its consultants in completing an assessment of the risk posed to River Road due to increased flooding, riverbank erosion, and road instability. The study was funded by $150,000 Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant from the state, and $50,000 in matching funds from the town. The findings from that were published in June 2024 and are posted on the town's website, identifying vulnerable locations along River Road that are expected to experience more frequent and extreme flooding and erosion. The report also provides an assessment of existing conditions, including riverbank erosion, culverts, and stormwater infrastructure. It provides projections for conditions in the years 2030, 2050, and 2070, and discusses possible options for shoreline stabilization and road accessibility. At tonight's town meeting, you have the opportunity to vote on the next step in the process, evaluating options to protect access to River Road and the natural resource areas along the riverbank. Article Six requests matching funds for a state action grant that would fund over a period of two years, an alternatives analysis that looks at the feasibility and costs to address vulnerable locations along the road identified in the 2024 study. The work will entail face mapping and data collection, surveying, geotechnical investigation, and wetlands delineation, and will yield conceptual engineering designs for options to protect River Road. This alternatives analysis is a necessary next step to inform the town of its costs and challenges associated with the options to deal with climate change issues facing River Road. The work to be funded by tonight's article will build upon an ongoing evaluation of the River Road culvert near the farm field that the state's Department of Conservation Recreation is currently doing at no cost to the town. That study, due to be completed in July of 2025, will, among other things, help us understand permitting issues presented in making River Road more resilient to climate The town needs the alternatives analysis that will be supported by approval of tonight's warrant article, to inform its decisions about the near-term condition of the road, including stability of the roadbed, and about whether and how to initiate short-term and long-term planning for potential projects, and compete for state and/or federal funding for implementing road and riverbank stabilization projects. Such funding can be expected to become increasingly competitive as climate change impacts become more widespread and serious. But moving forward with the next phase of work will likely put the town in a better position to compete for future construction grants. The warrant article is seeking up to $60,000 in matching funds from the town to obtain up to $600,000 action grant from the state. The grant has a 10% matching requirement. Thank you.
Ms. Callahan, would you please make an motion?
I'll be making a motion, Madam. Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote, oh, is this working or not? I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to some of $60,000 for the purpose of funding a 10% action requirement to be paid upon award of municipal vulnerability preparedness, MVP, action grant, and the FY25 grant round for River Road Resiliency Plan, including all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2027.
What is your recommendation, Mr. Strong?
Madam Moderator, the finance committee asks that the voters approve the motion to use $60,000 of free cash to fund a matching grant, matching requirement, if we are awarded an MVP action grant. an MVP action grant next spring.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those who favor please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Seven involves the transfer of funds for appropriation of $50,000 to further remove high-risk ash trees within the public roadway rights of way.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to some of $50,000 to fund the removal of high-hazard ash trees within the public roadway rights of way, including all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2025.
Second?
What is recommendation of the finance committee?
The Finance Committee asks that the voters approve the motion to use $50,000 of free cash to remove high-hazard ash trees along our roadways.
Is there any discussion?
Very quickly, French and I am the chair of the Finance Committee. The $50,000 that was approved before managed to enable the town to remove 114 trees. If you recall, we had 252 yet to go. So this will take another fairly substantial bite out of the number of trees that needs to be removed, and then in spring town meeting, we'll address the remainder.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those who favor please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Eight involves funding of paid, unpaid bills.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer of free cash to some of $902.43 to fund unpaid of unpaid bills in the term during prior fiscal years.
Second?
Sorry, what did you say? Oh, second. What is recommendation of the finance committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee asks that the voters approve the motion to use $902.43 of free cash to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years.
Is there any discussion?
Is this a vote?
I have to explain over here. Over the years, the state has changed the requirements of quantity of, for paying unpaid bills sometimes depending on why the bill got updated in the first place, and the original amount of quantity of, for all unpaid bills was nine tenths, and then they changed if the money didn't appropriate ahead of time and that does not spend, and it's gone back and forth between a number of different kinds of book. So since these deals represent different scenarios under that category, we're going to try to take it with a nine-tenth vote, which covers the majority. So. I have, I have to cancel this one. I can't, you authorized me to call a few first, but you did not authorize me to call a nine-tenth vote. Um, is there any discussion? I just discussed one. Seeing now, all those opposed to paying unpaid bills, please raise your red cards. All those who favor please raise your green cards. It's unanimous in favor. Article, Article Nine involves rescinding authorization for unused unissued debt.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the borrowing authorization for any unissued debt as authorized pursuant to the motion for Article 33 of the November 15, 1999 special town meeting for the Massachusetts Water Pollution Avoidment Facility projects, as the amount is no longer needed for the purpose or without proof.
Second?
What is recommendation of the finance committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee asks that the voters approve the motion to rescind the authorization for unissued debt, thus closing the books on certain prior borrowings.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those who favor please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the borrowing authorization for any unissued debt authorized pursuant to the motion for Article Eight of the November 13, 2000 annual town meeting for the Massachusetts Water Pollution Avoidment Facility projects, as the amount is no longer needed for the purpose or without proof.
Second?
What is recommendation of the finance committee?
It remains the same as the past all evening. We recommend approval.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those who favor please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous in favor. Article Ten involves authorizing the treasurer to enter into written tax payment installment agreements.
I move that the town vote to amend the West Newbury Town Bylaws by inserting a new tax type of payment agreement bylaw after type eight finances for the purpose of authorizing the treasurer to enter into written tax payment installment agreements. Subject to certain terms and conditions pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 62A, with the proposed bylaw on file and available for viewing in the town clerk's office, and further authorize the town clerk's office to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to the numbering and formatting to ensure consistency with the remainder of the town bylaws.
Second?
What is recommendation of the finance committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee asks that the voters approve the motion to authorize the treasurer to enter into written tax payment agreements under certain terms and conditions.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Eleven involves reducing the number of Finance Committee members from six to five.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the West Newbury Town Bylaws, Title I, Original Bylaws, Section Eight, entitled the Finance Committee Bylaw, for the purpose of reducing the number of Finance Committee members from six to five and establishing a clear definition of quorum for meetings of the Finance Committee. With the proposed bylaw amendments on file and available for viewing in the town clerk's office, and to further authorize a town clerk's office to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting, and to ensure consistency with the remainder of the town bylaws.
Second?
Is there any discussion? If not, all those who favor please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous.
Second? Madam Moderator, we thank those who came and attended tonight.
Absolutely.
I think the office is a great, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those who favor, please stand. Anybody opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Bob.